Good evening, everybody. We will call the meeting to order. Terry, can you confirm that we are in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. And if you could please call roll.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Nordean.
Here.
Commissioner Zer. Commissioner Becca.
Here.
Commissioner Clements.
Here.
Commissioner Farrar.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we will adjourn to closed session. I would hear a motion to adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin statute 19.851A and 1F.
So moved. Second.
Terry, if you could please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Johnson, excuse me, Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean.
Yes.
Commissioner Becca.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrar.
Yes.
We are adjourned to closed session. We will reconvene at approximately 7:00 PM. We have reconvened after our closed session. The board took no action during closed session. We'll move on right away tonight to our Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge leaders for tonight are Lola Lemke and Micah Williams, both second grade students from Longfellow Elementary, and I will editorialize here a little bit and say that they have brought a real enthusiasm to tonight that all of us are absolutely loving. Lola and Micah are great students to have in the dual immersion program. Their excitement for learning a second language helps them be successful. Even when things are tough, they persevere and try their best. Both students are sweet, spunky, silly, and energetic. We're very proud of how they're growing to be bilingual and biliterate. Tonight, they will recite the Pledge of Allegiance in both English and Spanish. Those of you who are willing and able, I invite you to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Lola and Micah, you can come forward and begin when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yo prometo lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a mi república que representa una acción bajo Dios entera con libertad y justicia para todos.
Thank you, Micah. I love you. You are welcome to head out. We pride ourselves on trying to have boring meetings. Now move on to the adoption of tonight's agenda. I would hear a motion to adopt the agenda for the evening.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed. You, the agenda is adopted. As always, we'll go on to our recognitions segment, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Nordean, board members, student representatives, and distinguished guests this evening. We have three recognitions, and at the very end, we do have a certificate. We'll get a picture afterward. But first, we've got Indigenous Peoples' Day. The second Monday in October marked Indigenous Peoples' Day. That day, we celebrated Indigenous peoples here in Wisconsin and across the United States. We will recognize non-our-own Indigenous people within our district next month, as November is Native American Heritage Month, and South Middle School will have a display in which one of our staff members is helping. The second recognition this evening is National School Lunch Week. Last week marked National School Lunch Week. Here in the ACSD, we would like to thank all our school lunch employees who are committed to providing our students with healthy meals each and every day. And just as a reminder, menus and other important information can be found in the food nutrition section on our website. And finally, we have National School Bus Safety Week. It is this week, October 17th through the 21st of 2022. Just a few facts to think about this week. More than 25 million children ride school buses daily throughout the United States. This accounts for 47 million trips daily, before you include an estimated 5 million more for activity trips. Roughly 54% of all K-12 students in the United States rely on school bus transportation. And this week reminds students, parents, teachers, and the community to keep school bus safety at the forefront. And we in the Eau Claire area school district would like to honor all of our student transit employees who are responsible for transporting our children to and from school each and every day. Tonight, we are joined by Jim Fai, Director of Operations for Student Transit, and Suzie Seiler Conroy. And when we get to that point, Mr. Fai, we do have some others from student transit. If you'd like to introduce them, that's great, too. But I'd like to tell you a little bit about Suzie. You ready? You ready, Suzie? Okay. She's humble. Suzie Seiler Conroy was hired by Flip Fai on October 4th, 1973, as a school bus driver. She has driven school buses for more than 49 years and will celebrate 50 years in October of 2023. Suzie is the quintessential school bus driver. She's safe, fair but firm, has a terrific sense of humor, and is clearly dedicated to her profession and the people with whom she works. Not only does Suzie play a crucial role with dispatching drivers and monitors and answering the phone, she's also ready at a moment's notice to jump in and sub on a route. We are incredibly grateful to her dedication to student transit, the Eau Claire school district, and the safe transportation of generations of families in Eau Claire, all while hardly ever missing a day of work. This is truly amazing. We'd be remiss not to mention she's done all of this without ever having an at-fault accident. Congratulations to Suzie on her 49 years. Did I have an at-fault accident this summer when I tried driving the bus to school? Almost.
Just 49 more years and you can start the clock over.
Forty-nine. No. Hi, buddy. Here we go.
Thank you.
Congrats. I was doing a little bit of a competition.
Thank you.
I was still, she started. What's that? I was doing a bit. Seriously. Thank you. Thank you. Get easy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you.
When I move on to our public forum, the school board provides up to 30 minutes in which community members may address the board. The board allows each speaker up to four minutes and will not hear personal complaints of school personnel or anyone connected with the school board in our public forum. Tonight, we'll begin with Mark Goings.
My name is Mark Goings. I live in Augusta, Wisconsin. Tonight, as I was looking at your materials for the work session, I believe it's number four with the public forum policy, which I've been known to speak at a few times, I thought I'd share a few of my thoughts on that. For one thing, especially now that we're in the hybrid system of school board meetings, essentially, right now, public forums open to anyone in the world. With the limited time that the board has to do the work of this community, I don't know that hearing from regional and national voices is the best use of that board's time. And so one thing I would wonder about is if it would make sense to focus that into having people who are residents, who are students or parents, you know, within the district, or staff members. Essentially, they'd each have a reason to come here and share their voice, because for the greater voices, there's other avenues that those ideas and things can be shared. Another thing that I've thought about is right now, there's the four-minute limit. I think the four-minute limit serves the board well. But as most of you know, occasionally, we have the big board meeting where there's a whole bunch of people that want to speak. My concern, when you go past that 30 minutes, is likely that's also a night that the board has a major discussion to have. And so I don't know if that it serves the board and the community when that goes into an hour long or an hour and a half long, and then, because that reduces the amount of time that's the board to have their major discussion. So one thing I would recommend there is, like, any time that there's 10 or more speakers, to have it become policy where it's limited to two minutes. And so that way, it takes the pressure off of the board on the spot, because depending on what the issue is, it could be seen as adversarial with the board or whatever. It's just a policy thing. Because if I was a speaker, and I knew this is probably going to be a big night, I would prefer to come here knowing, okay, I have to have my two-minute version and my four-minute version, but they're both prepared. It's a disservice to me as a speaker who's prepared if I come here and I find out moments before, oh, take it back to a minute and a half, or something like that. So it could be fair to everybody if it was after X number of sign-ups, it's two minutes. Also, I know there's been some discussion of if the next person's comments are essentially the same, you know, should they be allowed to speak? To speak to the board takes a lot of courage. And if I was the next person in line, I wouldn't want to feel pressured to have my voice be quiet. And also, even if you have 10 stories that are mostly the same, it's still you hearing from an individual person and their individual story. So that's where having it be that two-minute, I think would be a good place to start. I need to watch my time, too.
Oh, then I will cut you off.
And then the final thing in this section. I also know there's times where, as board members, I can feel it that you just want to be able to say something, that's what was just happening here. Having a back-and-forth conversation, I don't think would serve the board well. But I do wonder, especially those big nights where there's, you know, 10 or more people that are speaking, allowing the board a minute or two to have a summary comment could be a great way to at least show that the board is hearing. That summary comment could be a thank you. It could spotlight a resource, like, oh, if you want to hear more on blank, go to this resource on the board's website. It also could be a focusing question, saying, as a board member, I'd love to hear more about this part or this concept. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public forum for the evening. We'll now move on to our consent agendas. For each of the consent agendas, the board acts with one vote without discussion. The board has been provided background material on each item or discussed it at a previous meeting. If a board member wishes to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. The superintendent's consent agenda is first on the packet as always, and tonight includes Human Resources Employment Report, October 17th, 2022. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Move on to the board's consent agenda. The board's consent agenda includes minutes of board meeting, October 3rd, 2022. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Thank you. Consent agenda is approved. At this time, we will move into our board development session. I would hear a motion to adjourn to work session.
So moved.
Terry?
For clarity, we'll just do a roll call vote, since I'm not certain. I know we'd have to do that for closed session, but I'm not sure. I'll check on that for future. But Terry, if you would just do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yep.
Commissioner Nordean.
Yes.
Commissioner Becca.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrar.
Yes.
We are adjourned. It is 7:15. We will reconvene at the table here at about 7:20. Like this before, we're going to be somewhat more informal, so unless it gets crazy, we're not going to need, I'm not going to recognize people to speak, just jump in when you need to. So tonight is an opportunity to go through our regular process of looking at proposed changes to district, to board-level policy. There is, you know, one district-level policy or a couple, maybe, that we might discuss tonight on our agenda. And we're not taking any action, of course, during work session, but as, you know, it's in the agenda there, the idea is to try to figure out, you know, what's the next step for each of these policy adjustments? Can it go to consent? Does it need to go to an individual vote? Does it need to come back and be redrafted? Or does it need, you know, in the case of the public comment, right, we don't have anything prepared, so it's getting information to say, like, if we want to make changes, what should we draft and bring back to the board? Or, you know, you don't want even, like, need to talk about this anymore. It's not a change that we're interested in making at all. And you can see that there. So I started out, we started with the agenda. The administration, when we redid R3 in September, had proposed a language change to 3.4. That's listed there in 1A from the current language, which is Students Will Demonstrate Resilience, Resourcefulness, Collaboration, and Self-Awareness. That's our current policy. And the board had, the administration had requested a, or suggested a change. I just cleaned it up, one sentence to drop that, which are W Wisconsin DPI competencies. But if you'll remember, when we were in R3, we had the question of should we just move this forward onto an agenda, or is there an objection? Dr. Johnson, you wanted a chance to at least talk about it a little bit in the work session. So I think maybe Dr. Zhang is virtually to help, since that was some of there, but maybe, Dr. Johnson, I'll ask you first to talk about, you know, what your thoughts are on it, because you were the one who wanted it, and then we'll just kind of open it up to whatever discussion. Sorry about the green coding. I was trying to keep myself in line as I was figuring out where everything went.
So this is that proposed language, correct?
Yes. So if you look at 1A, like, the black language there is the current language, or R3.4, and the yellow highlight and the green there, the administrative recommendation of Students Will Demonstrate Emotional Development, Self-Concept, and Social Competence, which are Wisconsin DPI competencies. I would suggest we just, even if we move forward with it, discussion, we might drop the which are W Wisconsin DPI competencies and just leave it at social competence, but that's, you know, a finer point after the overall.
Yeah. My whole, you know, my argument was that the artifacts at the time did not potentially align actually kind of with that terminology used. I think objectively, trying to operationalize those with appropriate artifacts, very, very difficult. And I read the document that Superintendent Johnson provided with Dr. Zhang. I think for me, that the other concerning piece was, you know, with the artifact alignment with the terminology, that reliance on, there was this heavy reliance and/or inclusion of, like, the character strong pieces, which still, I would say, at best are exploratory.
Just for me to clarify, you have, like, you don't feel that the artifacts are aligned well with the...
The original.
The original language.
So after seeing Superintendent Johnson and Dr. Zhang presenting, trying to just make it align to go along with actually what DPI, obviously DPI feels that all districts across Wisconsin should be able to have some level of artifacts. I guess the concern I would have, and I guess I could ask Superintendent Johnson, will there be potentially adjustments to artifacts as we move?
If we switch the language?
Yeah.
Even if we don't switch the language? It sounds like you'd like that, but...
Yeah. So as we switch the language, and I guess what I didn't explore enough in the attached document that Dr. Zhang, does that include, I have it here, I'll try to get down here, do they talk about, do they give some examples in terms of what those competencies look like in delivery of what artifacts would be? And so that's really, that was really my piece, because, you know, resiliency, resiliency in one particular group of kids looks entirely, entirely different. And, you know, I think that over-reliance, though, in, like, the character strong, because, like I said, I have a middle schooler and a high schooler, and, you know, that was a varying degree of interpretation of kind of how, and we have two student representatives probably speak to that. But I am, I'm actually fine, and it makes sense. I see where Dr. Zhang, Superintendent Johnson aligning with that 36-page document, where in green, kind of like words, that kind of makes sense. It'll still be me being critical in terms of actually those, what those, the potential artifacts, and if there were adjustments made. And it's really the adjustments of having something else besides that heavier reliance on some of the character strong and...
So what I'm hearing you say is that you're okay with the language as it's proposed to be changed, but you want to just make sure that we are also continuing to work on getting better artifacts for that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So, and so, like I said, the language change, because there's a supporting document by our governing educational body that aligns here, it makes sense. So I'm fine with the change.
The other comments or questions, I mean, when we had it up for, can we move it to consent? Nobody else jumped in, but this is obviously a chance, you know? It sounds like, I'm certainly willing to put it back on consent to make this change, but I'd love to hear from the rest of you, if...
Why would we not align it with the DPI competencies? If that's what, if that's what we understood, or attempting to measure and describe?
That was my understanding, is that would, that would help the administration be able to produce better artifacts and for us to be able to get very, some of the similar character traits that we're looking for in 3.4, but happen in a way that's more manageable.
Consent, sounds good to me.
Okay. So that's really all we have to do with that one. The next is a board suggestion slash administrative suggestion, change to OE 10. You'll remember when we went through OE 10 earlier in the year, there was some discussion about there's no reference to referendum in there. So I think it was Commissioner Zer who brought it up at the meeting first, and she had been talking with Superintendent Johnson in order to forward with it. I just put together a very simple sentence, because I thought, you know, keeping it as simple as possible was at least the place I wanted to start with it. I was the one who volunteered to just write that sentence. That's there in green, so adding point seven to it there, which is develop and maintain a long-range plan for regular referenda that meet the capital and operational needs of the district. Again, just, and then I think that moves, you know, the current seven down to eight and just renumber. That is kind of the basics of it, and, you know, we can take feedback if we want changes or we want additional language. I'd much rather err towards leaving it open so that the administration can work with the referendum committee on developing that plan, but we can be more specific, for sure. So, you know, feedback or discussion is welcome.
Instead of plan, what about framework?
Any immediate objection, but do you want to explain more why you think that's a better word?
Because there seems to be a need for a referendum, kind of long-range framework for things that might be included in referendums. A plan, to me, is the superintendent making some very intentional choices on what might be in the ask, which I think is the board's role. The framework keeps it in front of us. The board, then, I think, is the entity that picks it up and moves it forward, since we're closing out the question. So for Mike to be able to say the next one's going to be operational, and the one after that would be extracurricular, and the one after that would be another locate capital, kind of assumes that the board's going to go along with that. A framework might be a process in which we're having these kind of work sessions to think about referendum and to take a look at how the budget is impacted by past referendums, where we currently sit, and what we might look like if there wasn't a future referendum. And that, that framework. Maybe it's the same thing.
I definitely think you drew a distinction there between how it would, in my mind at least, how it would look using those two different words.
How would we ensure that interpretation of those terms is how the administration and successive administrations interpret that?
Well, that would once again fall to the general process, right? When we have the policy, we empower the superintendent to make the interpretation and explain it in the monitoring report. And then if it falls within reasonable, then that's the interpretation to go to. And then our board or any future board could say, we no longer find that reasonable. I guess if we were worried that framework or plan wouldn't lead to what we were talking about, then it may be who us to define it more. But, I mean, it's always, it's always the superintendent's interpretation is what we go with, as long as the board feels that the superintendent's interpretation is reasonable.
I have a problem with that change. I think it's much in the issue of policies overall.
One thing that I like about having a specific plan, that we need to have a level of intentionality to get out, say, this is phase one, this is phase two, this is phase three. But I also hear what you're saying, ultimately, the board has to decide, are we really keeping in it, right? We had that discussion now about when we landed on our 98.6 million, you know, what are the things that got cut out from the 110 or the 120, and what are the things that we added from the, you know, 70 or 80 that was one time, you know, in discussion among the referendum committee? I think the, I think the thing that I like, and maybe framework can do this, too, and maybe that a framework doesn't preclude it being sort of a plan in discussion with the board. But that's, I do want us to be specific in saying, this is our vision, not only for, you know, we're white-knuckling it up until the point where we can no longer go without a referendum, and then, what do we fit in there? But instead, saying, this is the long-range plan, that this is what comes in the next capital referendum in five years. And maybe that, and always with the caveat, that's going to, that may change. That's going to change. If the tax tolerance goes up or down, we may have to move some things. I don't think I necessarily have a problem with calling it a framework, but I think that's the one thing that I am hopeful will come out of this process, is that we have really a lot more specific and intentional, if evolving, idea of what we're actually trying to do here. I think it feels as though our process, even though we've had, you know, 2011, 2016, that the process in the district has been sort of build up, and then, what can we fit in, rather than an intentionality of, we're going to get this, then we'll move on to that. But I don't know, I think framework can also have that, but that's what I'm looking for out of this policy, is that intentionality.
I'm kind of wondering, I don't know if, Mike, you would speak to this one? I'm kind of wondering, from the lens of the superintendent, what does this look like? And what if you had board members who are actually opposed to using a referendum at all?
Mike?
Those are probably maybe separate points in a way.
I guess somewhat. We've reached out to other districts, as we've discussed before, and spoken with other superintendents. So I've been in one of my previous positions where I guess there wasn't as much support for, let's say, a referendum, where there was some disagreement, or it wasn't the sevens at all, or still, after the question was developed, there was still difficulty as we proceeded, which is very problematic.
And the board.
I guess that really leads to our later communication between the superintendent and the superintendent and the board. Early on, expectations of the administration, or here are options for the board, but being very planful. That's a great question, Dr. Becca, but, like Tim had mentioned, somewhat of a, okay, we've got our timelines, but then it just seems like, you know, the last two, three weeks, then we really nail it down. Being more planful, yes. Having that knowledge of every so-on and so-for, whether it's for capital or whether it's for operational. We viewed some capital documents with long-range facilities planning, like our 10-year plan. Very interesting, and I know that Demo and Trends would have a lot to say about that as well. But I think it'd be interesting, when we get to this point, to share evidence or to develop the indicators and then share evidence, I think would be very...
very helpful to them, but as well as to the administration.
So you don't want to have, you know, the role clarity is the greatest thing about coherent governance. You don't want to have the superintendent and the board, you know, having, you know, doing the same rules. I wonder if there is a way to
Phil, can you pass me that? Get the candy.
There's a way. This is like, you know, sort of the accountability on the superintendent side of the house. Can we build in something that's equal accountability on the board's side of the house? Be in a different policy.
Probably be in GC2 governance culture.
And it
I can't remember. Yeah, well, I mean, maybe it would be, that's the first one that rises to mind.
I don't know.
Governing commitment, maybe it's GC5 is governance. I gotta go grab my book.
I mean, both parties are both parties are responsible and accountable in different ways. It's not like, you know, it's not overlapping, but I don't know if that would help. Only move it forward when everyone's in agreement, but if there are disagreements.
From a coherent governance perspective also, how do we attempt to ferret out what from a long range planning perspective is administration looking at our scope of capital and operations and saying, here's what we need to do, you know, to achieve our policies where board members might have a different perspective, where like this is one place where even a very small disagreement is going to have significant implications. So you know, how do we how do we think about how that particular element would be received? So, you know, because I could I could see board members having different priorities, like, oh, this should be prioritized more than that. You know, we disagree that this building should be prioritized over that one for political reasons or, you know, or or any other, you know, policy, technical policy besides politics. I could see that becoming something where it could be, it could end up being fraught at times where we could where a board could get into attempting to manage that framework, schedule, plan, whatever you want to call it.
I might go though to the the accountability. And I was just thinking, you know, it could also be something that while we have the referendum committee, you know, could be written into its chart, you know, participate with the superintendent in, you know, development and maintain, you know, if we had this policy, we could write it into GC5 in that way. Or, you know, as we talk about how to move away and try to do, you know, maybe we can and maybe we can't get away from having an ongoing referendum committee, but if it if the referendum committee were to move into just the full board, then, you know, we'd have to find a place for that particular thing, but that you know, it certainly will be will always be like Phil, you were saying, you know, and maybe that's why framework is the better word here is that the board ultimately it does have to make the decision whether to, you know, even if it's this is the bid in the plan, well, we're going to move this one out or, you know what, we're also going to pull this one in from the future or we're going to add, you know.
I was thinking about it in kind of a cafeteria. So you're you're presenting us with all the menu options and we're picking the things there where a plan for me, this is what we're doing. So that's
Sure.
That's kind of the difference. And what if we do have board members that see things very differently in either the priorities that are being set or not at all?
I would kind of have envisioned it about sort of like hot demo and trends, right? Like they're made up of community members and the administration comes and presents options and demo and trends helps to winnow those and then ask for more options. And, you know, I might view that as how, you know, again, this is interpretation and how it would settle out. That's not my job, but I but I would imagine would happen with the referendum committee to start or with the larger board if we put that in. And yeah, so maybe I'm settling in that framework is a is one that encompasses more and allows more flexibility.
The only only thing I I'm not really sure that plan a framework and maybe it's framework, but I what I with the with the with the terminology here that's being utilized, I guess for me, if we could get rid of a long range and also potentially consider removing regular and recurring.
You mean replacing regular with recurring?
Yeah, replacing a regular with recurring and 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 lo- long range makes it seem like this is it's there's no immediacy to it. The reality is every reported, you know, I think if you I just had it pull, I just had it pulled up, what was the the Wisconsin, they just released the report that even in the last six to eight years, even with, we have not seen an increase at the district level. And this year sets the record of both number of referenda asking for operations at 92. The last was 81 in 2000 and 2001. But then also, so I think the recurring and in in long range that this 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 it gives some level of immediacy that we have to always have. And if that's if that's school board, the school board pushing actually administration to have a plan or it's working collaboratively to like, I I think there there has to be, unless something changes, yeah, I I have it here. So we, yeah, so it's just kind of issue debt for facilities, you know, calendar year, been frozen revenue limits, high inflation, we're still using the same equation model from the early early 90s. And this report basically says that we have not added any true money or investment to education since 2000. So it's up to local communities and local communities, the only avenue that local districts have is is referenda of at both the operational and the capital piece. So if we, you know, I I think it's the, you know, having recurring recurring in there and not long range, because I think the reality I also is it's we're talking, it's we're really trying to make be impactful every two to three years, just actually catching up.
Yeah, I for sure, I put long range in there as a placeholder because I I know, I feel like maybe Dr. Bika or maybe other members of the referendum committee like might have been talking about a 30 year sort of look to it, but I didn't want to presume for anybody. So, yeah, long range is definitely a placeholder. We can talk about I I removed it in that draft that I just wrote kind of clean below, but we could we could put in if we want it to be a 30 year plan, like, you know, an ongoing 30 year plan. And I I fully agree with you that I think recurring is better than than regular because it gets that really the spirit of what our discussion has been is that we have to be intentional, we have to know it's it's not going to be one and done, it's it's we're going on and on. So thank thank you for that. And yeah, any other ideas like do we is it better to just remove long range entirely? Or do we want to specify a plan, you know, with our climate commitment? We have, we already had the board resolution to 2050, so we can, you know, benchmark it to that. This, of course, would be in perpetuity until a funding formula change, it was one way or the other with education, but.
I like the use of recurring, but I wonder if there's any issue with the legal definition of recurring referenda as as opposed to a not in recurring referenda. So because we talked, we learned about that a bit, you know, during the Baird, whatever the thing, the report. And so I just because of that legal definition, I wondered if we might need to use a different term that that conveys the same sense of the urgency of needing to repeat them regularly without it running into that legal definition.
So if there were an issue with the word recurring for that, would it be, would people be okay to go back to regular in this case? And again, I could check that too. But I mean, Terry, if you'll just make a note of that comment, you know, we can we can reach out to
Did it.
Sorry, what was?
Just not to be a hair splitter, you know, I don't
No, but that's you're absolutely right. And checking is, you know, checking these.
Hair splitting move, but yeah, not as bad.
Well, there was, fine.
But I I think if we like the idea of recurring, I think running it just quickly past, you know, our legal, our legal to make sure that that would be okay. And if not, we could kind of come back to regular with it.
Referendum at regular intervals, not to exceed two years. I'm just joking.
I think my, sure. So, yeah, we can ask that question. Other other comments or how do we feel about this in general? Is this something that we think, again, once we've settled that particular word, you know, also, do we want to have a timeline in there? I took out long range and then like, how do we want to move this forward? Dr. Bika, you look like you maybe had something.
I don't know the answer.
Sure. Do we do we want to bring it back for more discussion in this sense or, you know, if this what we what I've got right now is the current draft is develop and maintain a framework for recurring referenda that meet the capital and operational needs of the district. Are we, I mean, again, passing the legal side of it, can we do that on consent or do we want to have an individual?
Consent for me.
Okay, so we'll plan for that. If we can get it back for, you know, we've got three weeks till November 7th, maybe we'll see those two on consent at November 7th. I guess let's move on to number three. This is a bigger one, so I'm not necessarily thinking we will necessarily we will for sure be able to move it, you know, super far forward. But this, if you remember when we monitored OE 7, which is communication with the community and OE 8 is treatment, maybe it was the other way around. It's down, it's in the actual linked document there. One thing that we found was that there was a lot of redundancy between the artifacts and the things that we were asking for in those two separate policies. And so I took on the task of starting the kind of, we said, we'd like to try to combine this into one policy and really streamline it because it was it was getting pretty big. So I tried to put them together and just kind of blend them. Then I went out to Fisher Lyons and Dr. Bika. We were the three that originally worked on drafting the OEs together in the small group. And I said, hey, you know, this is what I've kind of put together. I'd really love it to have that extra feedback and especially looking for ways to streamline it. And so, you know, I know Commissioner Lyons and I, well, I know you had at least looked at it, but Dr. Bika also, I know, had went through it and and made some suggested changes. And so Terry, I wonder if you can bring up the actual text because it's fairly lengthy. So I didn't, it is available at that link there, of course. And so this is where we're sitting right now on this draft. So a new title of OE 7, Community Engagement. And you can see the text there, there is one additional comment from Dr. Bika that is in seven, the current 7D, perhaps dropping that and maybe Dr. Bika, if you want to speak to that. But we, I think, really did try to streamline this to make it so that we could hit all of the marks that we want and making sure that we're hitting the treatment and communication aspects, but kind of narrowing it down to make it easier for us to monitor and easier for the administration to produce. Some of these changes are fairly new, so we haven't had a lot of time to debrief them together. But Dr. Bika, I wonder if you'd start by just talking about some of your thought processes you went through and suggested edits. Open it to
Probably the easiest thing, I I just tried to cut as much of it as I could. I mean, that was the strategy, was just narrow it down as much as possible. So I guess if you looked at the two original forms, seven and then eight.
They are below on that in the document if you're
Like anything is now missing. Terry, then is there in that view, do you have comments like where you can see the comments on the right margin?
See if I'm up there, see what that says.
There's only one and it
You just dropped down to 7D. Yeah, it's not. Oh, you're gonna have to go back up because you're in
It's just a one pager.
Right, yeah, the other the other pages are just the, I wanted to put the original language and then this is not comprehensive because when Dr. Bika, I I left, I kind of logged the things that I was adding back and forth. But when Dr. Bika went through, she was working on her own, so some of the things that are cut or changed there. But yeah, it's just that first page. And yeah, so the comment that you have, Dr. Bika, 7D, I think you could be able to see that if you're, well, maybe you can't in view. Anyway, it just you had written, consider dropping item 7D, will make the report unwieldy and could be taken care of, could take care of separately with annual budget report. Sorry, Fisher Lyons, you were saying?
I I I love it as a one pager. I like the fact that we, you know, for community engagement, I saw it in there. It's that personal preference at events and activities where people get to know the superintendent and you know it when you see it and you've done a good job at it because you go to things and I see people engaging with you and that's what that's what I think this is. So, right, I I think it's great. Like what you did.
So where did where did the substatements come from in the proposed 7A through D? Where are you bringing those from if there was only, there's only a statement for seven? Where where were those coming?
7D came from
Well, I it flipped, so seven used to be
Six?
I think they all come from the the original policies, they're just they're just kind of reordered in some cases.
One that Phil just talked about, going to events and activities, I just moved it up because it seemed
And I didn't, I didn't really write any new text for this. I just kind of blended them, you know, like if if you look down below, there was, you know, like if you look in the the original OE 7, I've struck out item four and I said I use the language from OE 8, you know, so I put the OE 8s in it. So we did not write any new text. We we blended them and then as Dr. Bika said, I had asked, I said, I don't want to just be the only one cutting things out without another set of eyes, you know? And so then we just cut other statements. So I think it's all text that we already had written, it's just pushed into what is certainly a smaller format than we had with two policies and two, at least seven was fairly long, four and eight had shorter, but had a lot of the same things. I do think the good question is, you know, with this cut, are there things that we had originally that we feel we've lost and need to make sure that we're in there? We have that tension between, we want to be thorough, but this is too much and we want to streamline. I don't like, Fisher Lyons, you've been talking about on some of these, we'd like to find ways to actually narrow them down now that we know what we're doing a little bit more.
And Superintendent Johnson, what does this do in terms of gathering of artifacts or that does that, does it, does it, does it, does it cut down on the work or is still, is the work still? I I guess I'm trying to think back to kind of what was the submission of those those artifacts for OE 8, OE 7, right? Was it, because I, because that's the other part, you know, I I I think having a policy down to like one page, but if it doesn't, if it doesn't change the the amount of artifacts that are potentially being being provided, I'm not really sure. So it's
Does it streamline this?
It's it's for us for sure, but your question is, does it, can it also streamline for the administration?
Yeah, because I'm just not, if if we're still going to see the combined artifacts for OE 7 and OE 8, you know, you know, so
I think Dr. Bika did, you know, I had I had removed a few things, but Dr. Bika really, I think, removed, I I would love to hear from you as well, Superintendent Johnson. I'm hopeful that that will accomplish fewer artifacts having to be produced overall. And at the very least, it's not doubled, but.
And or like I said, an alternative would be is, you know, I don't know, not necessarily incomplete reports, but you know, it's kind of, if you if you imagine that you you're given in 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 parts, just kind of addressing like one through four of like OE 7, right? As terms of artifacts, if, you know, but I for me, I it that that's really the piece of thing, it 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 reduce, it reduces and or, you know, I think makes a little bit more efficient in terms of material, it has to be evaluated or judged upon for us to say it aligns, but it also in terms of, you know, I think from the gathers of our But it also in terms of, you know, I think from the gathers of artifacts, they kind of, kind of be, be a little bit efficient. So that's really, I guess what I'm, I'm curious. The reduction's fine. It makes sense from a policy perspective. But if it, if we're still going to get the amount.
Yeah. What's your, you know, initial reaction to it, Superintendent Johnson?
Well, I wanted to thank the board because truthfully, well, I'm always truthful with the board.
Can you pump back up to the current draft language on that, just in case people want to see it off, off there?
People tell me, well, to be honest with you. Also, you're not honest with me? When we had gone through the, you know, superintendent interpretation and developing the indicators for OE 7 and OE 8, I found myself, as well as speaking with the executive team and at times principals, there's some redundancy here. Like, we couldn't, but hey, these are, these are the board's policies. So I need to make sure I have enough for seven and enough for eight. So this really does help quite a bit. From that standpoint, streamlines our work. The second piece of this, now we're in our, really our second year of coherent governance, is finding that right artifact, the right evidence where hopefully I am demonstrating trust. Where I don't have to put a 40-page report for you. If I put a summary of a page, you get it, you understand. And when you're maybe speaking with the community members or you're speaking with folks in the schools, they're like, oh yeah, we just had this, this, this event happen. And for example, the superintendent was there. I want to continue to promote that, but I also feel the same way when you were to talk to community members, stakeholders, families, doesn't matter. And they're able to speak, well, yes, the administration or our school administration, yes, this is what we're doing. Because the worst that I feel during a board meeting is when we're presenting something and then we maybe don't hear about it in the schools. So when did that happen? That's not a good feeling for a administrator. So that means that communication, we're not doing it as well as we should or the certain mode for any stakeholder. So I, I'm really trying to zone in, in our second year of coherent governance with, with the right type of evidence and a palatable amount instead of, hey, here's the 40-page document as opposed to, yes, oh, yep, we've heard about this. We've seen an action. We've seen an update on it. We've seen a video on it. So this, this helps, I think this helps me and our team tremendously.
Dr. Johnson, I think you bring up a really good ethos, I guess, for us to have going forward is that, you know, our job is to make sure that we're, you know, accurately monitoring the district's progress. But where we can identify, we could go without this. This isn't adding to it, right? Let's, can reduce the load. Or, you know, as we've already been doing, like, we need different artifacts or we need to improve it to help get to that, what is the right artifact? So I, I hope that that's something, that's something that I think, that you just said that I'm going to make sure that I'm trying to think about as we go through this cycle and onward, is that the more that we can be effective, efficient, there, there probably will be times where we have to add artifacts as well because we're not getting enough. But that, I think, is a good thing for us to remember as board members that we're trying to be efficient with our time so we can really focus on student results. And the more that we can find ways to streamline helps all of us do our jobs better.
Terms of, does original OE items reflect?
Or seven, for that matter. I started kind of with seven as the baseline as longer, but certainly we've cut things from both.
Right. So in terms of integrating elements from OE 8 to seven, number three of eight, OE 8, developing incorporated structures designed to communicate with historically marginalized communities and seek input from diversarial voices. So the note is blended with 71E.
Well, that's, that's actually, that note predates the changes that you see there.
Yeah, that was from, that was from my original draft. And then, yeah.
That, I, I thought that that was. Sorry, Terry, no, the new wording, the new form on the first page. It would be assumed under, so. Yeah, right, right there, Terry, yeah. You get it under, under one, so one E, we can pick up that OE 2 emphasis. And then seven C, equity commitment.
I think there's something to that under the equity commitment, but I'm not seeing it under one, one E.
One B, I think is what she was saying is where it ends there.
Okay. I can, I can understand that.
You know, when I was cutting, I was thinking about wanting to retain this original wording so that I would, you know, there's like, yeah, remember that's what that, we should be remembering that. I mean, just as a reference back.
I think, I think your explanation addresses that.
To what you said, Josh, if we're not doing number three there, then we're failing.
Well, right. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't losing that in combining. So.
All right.
But I, I'm convinced that one B and seven C is sufficient. In terms of equity commitment and one V in particular, so I think.
So I want to take a chance then to look specifically at 7D. Because Dr. Bika, this is the one where you had the comment about, could we also get rid of 7D? So the habit, so everybody's heard it. Seven is published on behalf of the board and accessible standalone annual progress report for the community that includes the following. And D is revenues, expenditures and costs of major programs and a review of the district's financial condition. Dr. Bika, you've suggested maybe we could cut that as well. Do you want to just give a little bit of your thought and then open it up to?
I was just thinking for a, for a community report, it seemed kind of out of line, maybe. Community reports cannot be that long, you know, for people to really find them accessible. And that could become an enormous section of a report. That covers a lot of ground.
We've all been given the budget binder from Abby every year.
So if people really wanted to dig into that, maybe their go-to place would actually be within the district budget. And not as this communication report.
Thoughts?
So what is our intent? What's seven D is, it's right?
Laurie's suggestion was, could we just remove it entirely? And think, and that would be included, you know, basically under OE 10 or the, you know, the annual budget report that we get throughout the process.
Right.
So you're saying, what was the intent in the first place?
Was so that we had a item that someone who's not used to looking at financial disclosures can pick up and say, okay, I have a general idea of the district's financial condition without having to go to OE 10 or whatever and trying to wade through that content.
That probably, that, that strikes me as what our discussion was back in development.
Given that we are, are, we just finished talking about having a plan for recurring referenda. It seems to me that having some type of accessible document that can explain the financial condition of the district to a community member seems really valuable.
It's kept in that concise formatting.
Right, right. So that. And so what that might look like could be many different things. And I, it is never my job to represent financial information. And so I'm not the right person to just make a strong recommendation for what that should look like. But given the possibility that, you know, the board may change membership, you know, it will year by year. And we know that there's some hostility toward the notion of holding referenda. I don't know. It seems to me to be a high-value item to be able to summarize the financial status of the district for a broad range of community stakeholders. And yeah, I hope it's not a 40-page document, but I hope it's some type of summary that could identify key areas and, and clarify what that status looks like in a kind of a snapshot.
I think of the foundation annual report as, again, I know our, I know that the, the budget is going to have a different look to it, but that like, they do, I think, a fairly good job of on a two-page, in and out, kind of, this is the status of the foundation this year. So. So it sounds like maybe we leave that in for now. And we can also, you know, like, again, this is never meant to be that we'll not.
Change the wording, removing like revenues, expenditures and those specificities and put more general.
So just change it to a review of the district's financial condition? Is that what you're asking?
How about an accessible?
Let's say accessible. In the, in the text of seven, it does specify that the whole thing needs to be accessible. So.
Okay.
Brief overview.
Yeah.
Good. So what, what, what would you want it to say? A brief overview of the districts?
Brief overview of the district's financial. That's right. No, replacing.
I know. Yeah, I'm just writing it here so I can get it down and then I will put this strike through on. So a brief overview of the district's financial condition is what you're suggesting? Is that correct?
That's good.
So. I mean, I guess there was less back and forth discussion. Dr. Johnson, you still look like you're kind of considering it closely.
No.
Okay. Do we want to be, do we want to move this forward to, you know, like a board consideration? Do we want to do consent or individual? Or do we want to hold this for a little while and continue to ponder?
I, I, I think it's fine. If we, if we've heard a favorable response from the, the individuals who will be evaluated from an and or who have to provide. It's fine. Like I, I know what I'll be, for me, it's, it's really looking at the collection of artifacts, whether or not those artifacts allow us to render the decisions that we, that we need to make. And so I, I really think that's probably really kind of where I'm at in these processes. Really, do the, do the artifacts submitted allow us to make the decisions that we need to make?
Would you be okay with it on consent then?
I, I'm.
Seeing kind of nods around Dr. Bika? Okay. So I guess we'll put that one. I will, you know, we'll, we'll strike out that D and replace it with the one that's there. So I know it's not right in the draft here, but we'll. And we'll go forward. Okay, um, we'll, I mean, if we end early, we end early. But I just wanted to remind everybody, we won't do the, the board debrief tonight and we'll have a hard stop at nine o'clock. So if we're still going by nine, we'll, we'll stop then. The reason I bring that up now is because we are moving into one that may be more discussion. And this will be just a discussion item because we haven't had any sort of direction as a group. And that is discussion regarding our public forum policy. Over the past several months, I've had multiple of you, you know, mentioned to me, you know, hey, I'd like a chance to discuss this. You know, differing ideas on what we could do to improve it. And of course, you know, we had Mark tonight share some of his thoughts as a regular contributor to the. And I will say that in January of this year, Phil and I attended a session at the WOSB conference on public policy and, and sat there. I also attended the online one. It was the same person and roughly the same presentation, but it was just last week as kind of a refresher to make sure that we were on it. And I think the one big takeaway that I got from that was that looking at policy 188, it is a very strong policy. It complies with sort of all of the things that they recommended. There is some flexibility for us to, you know, consider some changes. They had some, some recommendations for things that, we can talk about that. But I think just in general, our baseline is our policy is very good, complies with all of the laws. And so it's not an issue, I think, of the policy is dangerous, for lack of a better word, but that maybe we could do it more effectively. Maybe things could be better. So I want to open the floor. I know, like I said, several of you have mentioned that you have ideas. So I'm just going to wide open and we're just going to use this as sort of a, I hope, and maybe there will be some direction. It could even be just that we end up doing, whether it's specifically policy or whether it's just procedurally, you know, one thing that they mentioned in the, in this, and the online one that I hadn't caught before was they actually don't recommend that you ask people as they come forward to say their name and address. They're like, you're having them sign in on the paper or whatever your thing is. That's probably sufficient. I know that I've had some community members express to me, I don't feel great about, you know, and when it's one of these big ones that it's heated about saying my specific address. And the WOSB attorneys said, it's probably not necessary. So tonight I didn't ask that. And, you know, Mark, I think out of habit still said, you know, the town, but he's even moved away from the specific address. So that was like a, you know, just a procedure that the president, whoever it is, could, we could also adjust some of those things to. So sorry, I've overtalked again. So I just, I'd love to hear from any of you about what your thoughts have been about what we might consider for changes or how we could do public, public comment effectively. Whether to do it at all. We are not, by any statute required, of public input. We do it as a service. We believe it's helpful or valuable to the community.
I would start off by echoing some of Mark's comments. When I think of the board meeting, which is normally two hours, if we have something that we're voting on and it's got a lot of public attention, their plan usually is a lot of people that are interested in commenting. If we get a number of individuals that all would like to speak to something and we want to devote, say, 30 minutes of the two hours or 30 minutes of a longer meeting, three hours, to public comment. If we have 30 people, maybe we do start to shrink the time that they're allowed to comment. Because I do feel that there are times when we have a lot of people that are commenting that after the first few comments, you, you do get repetitious. But I don't think that we should necessarily say, if you've already said something, you can't say it again. Because I also agree that it does take a lot of courage to get up in front of the board and, and, and people want to have avoidance. I also think that if we do make changes to this, we should get a lot of public comment about public comment. Because I, I, I don't want the perception to be that by changing public comment, we're saying that we're not interested in hearing from the public. I think that's an important distinction.
I don't think this will solve all of the time constraint issues, but what if public comment was limited just to agenda items?
That was something that WOSB attorneys specifically said that's okay. And there wasn't really a necessarily a concern, a legal concern about that or First Amendment concern that that is a.
I mean, if people wanted to comment on other things, they could always, you know, submit them in writing, those comments to be shared with all of us. But you can only speak if it's on the agenda. Like I said, I know that won't, that won't take care of all the time, you know, kind of those timing problems, but.
That would take away some of the performative things we've seen, for sure. Or someone is just going through a rehearsal. a rehearsal, you know, for the sake of doing it, not because I don't think there's any expectation that it's going to have an effect. But I do worry about anything that we do public comment-wise, which seems to be.
Limiting access.
limiting access, yeah. Even if, even if the, having efficient and effective meetings kind of maybe counter to that. I think if we restrict topics, we're going to be in troubled waters and just in terms of how the community's perception is.
Yeah.
And I think there's already unwarranted perception issues in terms of how the board is construed as not being responsive to certain audiences in the community.
I actually was thinking that it would make us more responsive, not less. Because. And in the same way that, you know, and I don't know from what, you know, if there is going to be something where people talk about, you know, maybe there's some kind of response, shared resources, or what it like Mark was suggesting as a possibility. I mean, if you've got people speaking on, you know, 20 different topics, we're not going to, we're not going to be responsive to all those people. Whereas if it is focused in the way that we, I mean, we have now focused our own, I mean, we're kind of shaping public comment after the way we've shaped our own board meetings, you know? So that we'd actually be more responsive if the comments were directed at the, I don't know, but I, you know, I get what you're saying. Whereas it's not that you can't share an unrelated comment, but you would be asked, you know, you would do it in writing and we would all receive copies.
I don't know, from those readings, I think for me, there was a series, what is the?
School News, maybe?
Yeah.
School News.
Yeah, when the series that they did, I, for me, one of the, one of the ones I really liked that, in terms of ensuring that all voices are heard, that actually individuals who are quote-unquote recurring speakers automatically are moved to the back of speaking to provide new speakers the opportunity. It's that, that's like in policy, that actually new speakers and recurring speakers are automatically know that, you know, your speaking opportunity, because you spoke at the last meeting, is unless there's no other speaker, then you're there. However, you are moved behind other speakers. I also talked about this, this piece in terms of ensuring voices that, that is deliberate about if there are students that want to speak, staff that wants to speak, that there's this level of order to that and following along. And for me, I would embrace a policy in our direction like that, like wholeheartedly. Like for, you know, for students to, for students to want to come and actually speak to, to the board about, you know, things that are actually meaningful to them and what they're talking about, besides bringing it to their, besides bringing it to their reps. But I think just, just coming to speak and not worrying about now. Actually, I take that back. I would, you know, hopefully we would not have incidents like in some of our other neighboring districts where, you know, our student body is booed and our other, other things happening. But having that, having that in policy where, you know, the, there's an order of trying to ensure that all voices are being intentional about those marginalized voices being able to be moved to the front against the recurring backdrop of, you know. Some of the theatrics. Unfortunately, what I was looking for, and there's not a lot of like, there's not a lot of information or data out there. It's like, there's just the lack of just like consequences, you know, for the theatrics. Like I don't need to be, I don't need to be charged with like a phone in my face or like paperwork like, like thrown at me. There should be, like, you forego your speaking opportunities for like a month. I don't even, like, yeah, I just, I, you know, I don't know. Or a superintendent Johnson and I, you know, I literally probably would have been, I don't know, probably would have had to resign. Fired, well, I guess you could. So I from the school board, but when people like, when the gentleman like proceeded to act like, like, I don't play that. Like, I'm not letting anybody put their hand in my face. So there has to be like consequences. That gentleman should actually not be permitted to actually, there should be consequences that individuals who engage in that like lack of decorum should not actually have an opportunity to speak.
I think if that was a direction that we as a board wanted to look at, I think there, I know there were some discussion on some of the difficulties there. I think, you know, you could prioritize, you could say, you know, the order goes students, teachers, new speakers, old speakers. That might, I think we'd have to just look at that closely and make sure that we weren't, you know, I think there might be some issues if we say, you know, we're identifying marginalized communities and letting them, that may. But I think if that's the direction we want to go, we just have to make sure we do the background on setting that up. As a clarifying question for what you're thinking, if we were doing that, right? That, that, you know, in your view, it would be just if you spoke at that one meeting, you would be moved to the back, the next meeting, but then the second one, if you didn't speak at that next meeting, could you be back on the? Then I have a second question, but so I'll let you do that and then I have one more follow-up, just so I get an idea of what you're envisioning as we talk about it.
Yeah, I guess as I was reading in that, in that series that came out about like, like, like school board public comment, it's, you're all, all new speakers always are afforded the opportunity to be first. And then after that, then you can actually like, like, and so my thing is, so in your case, I would say still, if they're still new speakers, that individual still would actually, yeah.
So I wonder, but I just, that begs the question of like, what's the statute of limitations, for lack of, it's not the right word, but like, you know, so is it, you came to speak, now you're considered a, have spoken for how many meetings until you can be back? I mean, I hear what you're saying and that could be, and I think there was some, like, that, if I remember the Wasbe information, that some of that might be, you know, it's probably permissible, but again, we'd have to construct it. And then my, my second follow-up to just what you're envisioning, so I can think about it more. You know, I certainly have, and I feel like President Torres before me kind of erred on the side of if we have 10 people, barring a rules change to shorten the time limit, we let everybody talk, even though, you know, like generally it's sort of the de facto, like it says we can extend it by the president's decision or the board. But it sounds to me like in this case, you might be like, we should really hew closely, if we say there's a time limit, we should really just say at the time limit. And maybe it means that, you know, if you're on the list and you didn't get to speak, we can say you can either submit a writing or you're already on the list for the next meeting, please come back. But would you, in what you're proposing, would it be the responsibility of the president and the whole board to just say like, we just close it at 30 minutes?
Yeah, but I also looking at 180, what is this?
188.
188, it says up to four minutes.
Right.
And so it's at the discretion of the board. And I think the discretion would be based on actually the number, the number of speakers. And by, by default, though, ten speakers, four minutes goes over a lot of 30-minute timeframe. So by default, actually, the speaking time should be reduced. That's how I would actually like view it. So however, you know, like I said, that's just.
I think we try to, we would.
Try to get it to.
So if we had 20 speakers, you'd get a minute and a half.
So and then that actually then provided if there's additional things that, yeah, it's provided in writing. Yeah, because I remember, yeah, we, yeah, some of you are, some of you are a little bit more willing than, you know, I, I'm pretty sure for 45 minutes, that hour and 15-minute public speaking session that we had, I probably 30 of 30 minutes where it was useful, but you know, it's, you know. However, I think that 30 minutes should be a hard, a hard 30 minutes.
That's the only way that it makes sense to move people necessarily to the back. I mean, there's one thing to say, like, we want you to be able to not have to sit there in an hour and wait for the regulars. But if you don't have that cutoff, then it doesn't really matter if you move people to the back because everyone will get through. So I just, that was, as I think about it, thank you. Other ideas or things that you've been thinking about? I mean, we just, I just kind of want to get them all on the table so this is something that we can, you know, we can bring back up or.
I think, I think of Mark's comments or suggestions, the kind of automatic reduction in time per speaker if there's a certain number makes sense. Because then it's, as he said, not forcing the board to like say, oh geez, there's a lot of people here, we better knock it down to two minutes. It's a matter of, so many people signed up, you know, the president would say, we have 12 people signed up, so it's going to be three minutes instead of four or something like that. I think that is reasonable. I don't know if two minutes is reasonable, but it's sensible. I think three is perhaps more reasonable. The other suggestion that he talked about, which was having an opportunity for the board to provide a response, I'm less certain as to how we would accomplish that.
Wasbe was fairly like, very careful if you're saying anything in response to that public comment.
Yeah.
It wasn't, you can't do it, but they were very, and I see Phil you nodding along, like they were, they were really recommended.
Yeah.
If anything, only the president speaks very briefly. And I, I don't particularly want that either because I don't want to, I mean, this is just me as the current president, but I don't want to be tasked with somehow having a response on the fly to.
No.
Because that's not, it's not meant to be a discussion with the board. It is meant for you to present information.
Right.
And, you know, we do, I think, sorry, go ahead.
That, that I think relates to what you guys are talking about. And it's the one part of 188 that we're actually, like, we actually do not follow because of any longer, because of coherent governance. It's the one where they're, I lost it there, the.
Oh, it's about, yeah, it's about after each segment, yeah.
So it's bullet point four there. We used to do this, we don't do this anymore. Items for discussion. I actually think that would, I, I agree that I, I do not, I actually do not want to see the board responding to people. I don't even want to see the president responding to people for any reason.
Because when I'm gone, you may have to do it, though.
No. But I did always appreciate the opportunity to ask questions or the clarification. I used to really appreciate that and I thought that that might be able to take care of some of the, that people need more information or need a resource or something in the clarification.
I do not like the idea of opening up additional segments, being able to walk up to the mic and be able to talk. And given, I mean, there's always, you can always ask for more information. I personally, I did not, I had not served on the board as long as you did, you know, and that was not something that I think at a board, I think that I don't, I don't personally. I mean, you could convince me very easily to not offer public comment at all. I don't find it particularly useful. I think it is performative more often than not in a way that isn't helpful.
Well, how about this one thing, I mean, we would do for sure, I think we should do it immediately on 188, like it go on consent is strike that, I mean, strike that fourth bullet.
Yeah, that's, that would be fine with me.
And then I do understand that if we have a difference of opinion about that, then that's fine.
We can work through it, though, and make that, you know.
I think if people have, are seeking aid and they're coming to school board to like make their appeal, there's other ways to do that, like they can come in and they can call the school, district office, they can email, you know. So I think trying to have that kind of line of inquiry and public comment is not appropriate. Like oftentimes I have more questions about what exactly happened there, but I, you know, if I don't, if the person doesn't follow up via email and they don't say who they, or if I don't have a way to contact them, then it's kind of their, kind of onus is on them if they're looking for help. And usually it's not the school board who, member who's going to be providing that. It's like.
I will say, you know, at least, at least once, we had a student come. One, just heard a club. And we have responded at the moment and someone has said, I don't remember if it was you, Tim, or if it was you, Brandon Johnson, he said, we're going to, we will follow up with you about, you know, what you just said. And I think that instances like that, that was an appropriate response. And I think especially like in the case of a student, that, yeah, we should be, not that we're going to respond to the whole content there, but to say, we will follow up, like, you will hear from us. You didn't just speak into an abyss because, I mean, that's certainly a constituency that we have a high priority to be responsive to, even if there's nothing we could do to assist that student in the situation that they came to speak on. But I wouldn't feel good if a student came and spoke and that we just stared at them and never wrote to them or never called them or said anything back. Like, that wouldn't feel right to me.
Yeah, certainly the implication is not no one will follow up at any time. It's more than.
Sure, yeah, but I'm just saying that I think there are instances when it's, it is appropriate for us to respond and to let someone know that we want to find out what the situation is and that we want to follow up with them. Because it may not be clear to some constituencies what the procedure is. And that might include students, but it might also involve other historically marginalized community members who may not happen to know that if you really want to get something done, you need to send an email or you need to call this number. That just might not, that might not be clear. And so certainly I don't want us to be in the position of having a policy where we respond to everybody or respond in a particularly specific formalized way. But I think we want to have the flexibility to be responsive when we all sense that that's just the right thing to do. Like, and I, I understand that that's not like, none of that is easy to write a policy around when we feel like it's the right thing to do isn't a, isn't a framework at all. But I did want to raise that as a, as a thing.
Not wanting to muddy the waters at all, just, just observations. All the points, fantastic. Laura, you had started here, 2017, as a board member? Now of three different districts that I've been in at the table. And when you're in a committee structure, it's sometimes four meetings per month that I had to attend. But since 2010, so I've gotten to see quite a bit of public comment and experience it. Now granted, the past two years have been some weird times. Sometimes very difficult, but things that have helped. But one thing I've noticed is that most people prepare their remarks. So what I learned from Appleton's district is, for example, if there's the time limit and it goes over, the folks who were not able to speak or did not, they did not get to, they sent their comments electronically to the board or they gave their prepared remarks to the board. What I learned last year is that this is not for the public. The public comment is to address the board, not to turn and face the audience, the guests that we have. It's to, to share this information with the board. So a couple ideas, I mean, do I think four minutes might be a little long? Do I think, I think the last two districts I've been in, it's been three. That's fine. We will have various things that'll take quite a bit of time. Could it be compensation? Could it be benefits? Could it be boundary changes? Could it be, you name it, we're going to have it. You're going to have people, very emotional issues. One thing that I found helpful in the past two districts I worked in where you didn't just sign up, you wrote a one or two sentence summary about what were you going to talk about? Because when you had seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 people saying the same type of thing, is that 44 minutes worth? And then probably you have people on the other side of that issue as well. It is somewhat tough, I think, for people to know, and we did it before, cutting it from four to two. Yeah, but on the flip side, if you knew that you would get your information to the board and the board would read that, that could work too. But having that summary where it was stacked up, okay, we have, we'll have three people out of the six speak or three people out of the eight, random number generator quickly, here we go, would anybody like to give the floor to someone else? Those are all different things that I think sometimes, sometimes people do it, and it is courageous to get up in front of an audience. We do value public comment. Just, just a couple of things I've noticed through my two and a half years here, but also from, from others as well.
So to kind of summarize, I think, Dr. Johnson, I think, would you like, we can probably do a little legwork and dig into, you know, what that might look like if we had priority speaking?
Well, yeah.
We can get some more information and consider it?
Yeah, and I think I still, I still have, I still have those articles, so that's.
Maybe we can dig in more specifically like to Wasby about like, these are some of the questions and get some more information to, to think about that. Dr. B, I think we can have some more discussion about whether we open more segments to additional public input or not. I feel like I'm, and then, you know, we'll have to think about response. Maybe it's at the discretion of the president to, you know, for those little type things.
I mean, I think it would be rare.
Right, and that would need to be a job of the board if, if it's me or whoever the president is that has that discretion to say something like, well, you know, we'll follow up with you to, to sort of under GC2 kind of say like, hey, you know, you're starting to take this too far. Or maybe we do need to revisit the policy, you know, it could be something like that, but that's a thought item. I do want to get, I think one thing that you mentioned, Dr. Bika, was striking the fourth bullet point, which is, because we, we just no longer have that thing at all, it doesn't apply to our current situation. So just during the meeting, during the committee of the whole meeting of the school board under items for discussion, citizens may ask questions and or request clarification on the topic of the school board to discuss item. There's not a requirement to sign up, et cetera, or that, we do not have that in our current format. So I, I think there's no reason that we can't just strike that via consent. Unless there's an objection, we'll move that, that part forward and we'll continue that discussion for how to potentially, you know, whether or not we want to do that as part of this ongoing process. I think it's also, there's been some interest expressed in, I think especially Mark's idea of add a certain number, saying we were, you know, like having it in writing that if we have X number of signups, it's an automatic reduction of time to some set amount. I think we'll keep that in the mix of thought. It's easy enough to sort of write that particular statement. Is there anything else that I'm missing or kind of summarizing before, I do want to make sure we hit a couple of these other things?
Superintendent's comments kind of made me waver a little on that reduction of time. So if someone comes and prepares for a three minute statement and then all of a sudden their time is reduced to two. If, if, if we go that direction, I would hope that we're very clear in communicating to folks well in advance that that's, that that's the board rule.
If we, I mean, I would think if we started some policy like that, we would set the transition time out in the front a ways and be able to message that over board meetings, you know, that could be added to the president's little spiel, you know, as a reminder, starting on February, whatever, you know, we'll, we are having a change on public, so that, that gets out ahead of time. But I mean, we don't even have to make that change either, you know, we can, Sarah.
I, I would hesitate to make any change that could be interpreted by anyone as us not being willing to listen to the public.
Sure.
As, as much as I, I think we should try to stick to those 30 minutes, usually we can without difficulty. And I'm not sure that it's worth it for the negative perception to save maybe an hour once in a while, our time. That's just my thinking at this particular moment.
Yeah, I, I don't know, the other, other statements Superintendent Johnson made though, you know, if people are coming with prepared statements, they, they also can be sent, sent electronically and shared with us. So I, you know, for me, let's have a repository of, of, of shared, of shared statements that come in from public comment, you know. I, I honestly don't think you should, I could actually do without actually talking about too much commitment to athletics and spending money on lights and going on and, and, you know, I, I, and I, and to your point, maybe you all feel like everybody deserves a voice. I, I did not need to listen to that. And I, I was, I, that was, that was, that was a waste of my time. And I would have told that gentleman that was actually like a waste of my time. And so I, I, I did not actually, so that was not prepared either. That was actually, I'm, I'm pretty sure that wasn't prepared, so.
Oh, he was not prepared.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, but could I, 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 I think about the gentleman who, because, just think about one of the more issues that were really, you know, came up, but the gentleman that came and actually shared his, his, his experience as part of the LGBTQIA community, growing up here. And he had a four minute speech, but actually broke it down on his phone to two minutes in that allocation. And it was prepared. If we're going to comment, please provide actually the entirety of your speech via a, a, a word document or email attachment. So versus, like I said, you know, spending money on lights and games and like, I, 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 I don't feel, I don't feel the same that everybody, everybody's contributions actually should be, should be here. But if they're prepared speeches and if it's like Superintendent Johnson said, if the intention is to speak to the board, there are multiple ways that actually you can get your, your, your needs across or your concerns across in, in, in writing. I, I could have took that in, yeah, in writing, probably been scribbled, so whatever.
One thing that, you know, public comment pretty soon here is going to happen in the context of a new board communication plan. So people might think that maybe, maybe they feel this is the only mechanism, but it's not going to be for long. And there will be more appropriate ways to, you know, ways that will, people will get their needs met, you know, I think so. I'm not sure if that, like thinking of this public comment in the context of more of that overall communication plan. I mean, maybe it's, maybe there's a completely different approach to public comment that we haven't considered yet. If there's something radically different to it, I'm not sure what that is, but.
I think this gives us four sort of concrete policy ideas to explore in the next phase. Like, you know, whether or not we trigger reduction in the allotted time based on number of signups, whether or not we prioritize, you know, new speakers versus old, how we might respond and whether or not to offer additional opportunities for public input in the meeting or, you know, how we might look at that as well. And then of course, we, we can explore the overall as we go. But I think we can kind of hit on those four and maybe bring that back with, I don't know if it's draft language or at least we can be thinking about those things for more discussion about where do we each land on that? How should we move forward going on that? If it's okay with everybody, why don't we just move on to the next sort of work session agenda item? And that is administrative changes to OE3. We just did OE3, our climate commitment, and there were a couple of suggested edits for the actual policy language. I motioned and we did end up rejecting those so that we could talk about it in this set. As I looked at it, looked it over, what it looked like to me, Superintendent Johnson, you were asking for it, was just sort of a standardization of how the language is laid out for the monitoring report. This one is currently formatted somewhat differently than the other ones. So what I tried to do was taking your suggestions that are there in green, I built it into, I tried to just sort of standardize it with what we looked at, and Terry, if you could bring up that link to kind of this redlined, I have a redlined and a clean text on that document, and then you can click through on that link too. But it really was, I didn't, I don't think, change any of the language or intention. It was really just to put bullet points in and get it up to time, you know. So it said accordingly, within six months of adoption, well, we're past that anyway, so we can reformat that language. And the same thing with removing that last sentence and putting it down in number two as an updated. And then just having it be, you know, the superintendent will with one and the subpoints, you know, no changes to the description of the four topics. So it really was, to my mind, I, I tried to really just make the language consistent with what it looks like in some of our other policies. So Superintendent Johnson, I hope that hits kind of what you were looking for in those. And so I'd love to hear your feedback because this wasn't an administrative suggestion, but also everybody else's if this. Yeah, I, I try not to, I mean, I think I, you know, I updated the language of that following the release sentence that I moved into the new number two there, release and updated and revised plan. I, I tried to keep the spirit the same. And if that's, again, because it is just sort of renumbering, does that work more clearly? I mean, it already sort of follows what you had broken down in the, you know, ongoing report. So I don't believe that will, it'll just allow it, the, the monitor report to actually look like the. This might be a quick one because it is just kind of a renumbering. Are we okay to just put that on the consent as well?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess we'll, we'll move that one as well. And that actually gives us a good amount of time. I'm glad that we could go through some of those changes because we did, six and seven are items that were on the previous policy work session agenda that we weren't able to, to get to in that time. So thanks, Dr. Bika, for bringing those back forward. Do you have a preferred order that you want to take these in? Do you want to do it in six, seven, or do you want to do?
They're kind of small potatoes and whole skin thing.
Okay, so I mean, I'll let you just introduce or talk about whichever one you like, since these, you know, were ones that you were bringing forward.
So I guess the, on that, for the student reps, the, the kind of overall question is right now it's a district policy. I don't know if folks can look at that policy 441.2, I mean, if you're just able to get your eyes on that. And I, I just, I thought with the change to coherent governance, it seemed like a strange position to sort of put the, I don't know, put the superintendent in or other administrators sort of being controlling aspects of the student rep process when really they're reps to the board.
One thing I, I will just bring up on that, that little point is that, when we were actually looking at the public comment that we were discussing, that it remains, there was. Anyway, I can't remember which discuss, you and I mentioned it, that, that one of the districts kept, I think it might have been public comment, was in, as a district level policy, even though it's, you know, the board's public comment at meetings. And so we do see coherent governance districts leaving some, you know, sort of board policies in the district level rather than putting them on, so. That, that isn't to say we can't move the student representatives one up into the GCs, but it isn't something that it would have to do, like there are, there are policies that remain, that like impact the board that remain at the district level, even if they're board ones. But that's, so we can't, we definitely can leave it there if we want to, but it may be worth elevating. It was just something that you and I don't remember, I think it was public comment, I remember you saying that you had looked at.
Yeah.
It was, we, we were discussing Chippewa's policy and some of the points on that. And then you had said, you know, they leave it in the district level, even though it's sort of board work.
I've worked with Neola lately too. A company we've started to utilize to, to go through our policies at many, I shouldn't even say larger districts, probably three quarters of the districts in the state utilize Neola. A company that updates our policies for us based on state statute, federal law. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful product. Wish I would have had it years ago in other districts because that was my job, my duties as assigned in my former lives. But I, I had a hesitation and, and I've seen it because we've, we've poked it probably three or four, I think DeForest, Chippewa. There are a couple of their coherent governance districts where the 100 levels stay at the 100 levels. Like I wouldn't think to take out the 100 level policies with the board as a superintendent. I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable as a superintendent saying, well, yes, we're going to abolish these policies. That, that's the board, it's exactly what we're talking about with 188. So there were many that we went through in our last review that Kim and I and a couple others were like, yep, they have the 100 levels, they have the 100 levels and their coherent governance, so they keep them this district level as well. So.
That's not to say that we can't, just that it is possible to leave it, there'd be undue burden on the superintendent. Like, it, it seems like other districts that are using the system are leaving those sorts of things there. And then your second point, there is update to match coherent governance expectations. I think that's, that is, that's good, we should do that. Are you willing to like, you know, write a first draft of how that might look? And then maybe select one or two other members to collaborate with on it and then bring it ahead for the next time? Are there other reactions or ideas or comments?
So I just, I just saw in this 4412, we probably need to rethink about number five probably needs to be moved to. Under the, students are no longer able to serve as student representatives to the Board of Education. They must send a letter of resignation to the school board clerk, a replacement of the, yeah, that's.
What were you thinking about that?
The school board clerk, the one that would receive the letter, a school board clerk does not really have that, that level of interaction actually with the.
She's the secretary, Marquell is the clerk, oh, you're saying it should be the secretary? It's just designated that it's officially, it's going to a board member, say I'm resigning. Just like if one of you were to sign, you would send me a letter to do so. But I.
Not to the media?
Oh, you could, you could do that as well, but we're not going to let you resign via the media. You'll have to send it to me in addition to.
You're not out, you're still in.
I will not accept a media resignation, so.
All right, yeah, I, 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 I guess because, because how, how much of that, you know, that relationship, I think, you know, to, to, to Dr. Bika's point, I think that, that the challenge would be if, you know, if we, if we remove, we were to remove Superintendent Johnson from the equation, we're bringing in actually like, you know, building, building administration, administrators to potentially highlight, you know, students to try to, try, try to consider. And I'm pretty sure it's the building administrators. How, how are you all recruited, if you don't mind me asking, yeah, how, how are you all recruited to do this?
Pop up on the website to apply and you just had to apply for it. No one reached out specifically, you kind of had to.
For announcements at North, we have like daily announcements to go over the loudspeakers. Position was allotted there and physical copies were given in student services.
Still doing that.
Yeah, it was cute, it was very cute, world fashion.
B, this is an opportunity to say that at McKinley and Eau Claire Virtual, that Jim and then Pete are, are actually still like actively recruiting, with the hopes that we'll have like the full, like all four in place still this year.
Has it always been four representatives?
Well, that's a new, but then they, it was, it was really, and Pete Riley really was the one that, to say this practice of, you know, I missed it here, that.
Point number one.
Application.
Sorry.
Point two, yeah, application, submit to the principal second Tuesday in April. There's just ways that students' scheduling and timetables work at North and Memorial. It's very different from how they work at McKinley and Virtual. So this does not actually serve all students well. So we, you know, we abandoned that and taking application, I mean, so we're still taking applications. And even the idea that it doesn't have to be, although I just, I actually don't think it says that here now, that it has to be a, a junior or senior, doesn't say that, does it?
Yeah, grade classifications removed, so.
And that was a recent change to, it used to say just Memorial and North, even while McKinley has been around for plenty of time. And then with the Virtual, that was a change that I think maybe not quite this board, because Dr. Farrar, you just tried this. But I think maybe the board as constituted prior to Dr. Farrar made that. tried us. But I think maybe the board has constituted prior to, Farrar made that, it was April of 2021. March and April was the last revisions on those. So.
Oh, that's right.
And it was just to make sure that we could get, like, you know, it should be each, each high school and then specifically only saying the two large high schools.
Well, North and Memorial could have plenty of juniors and seniors who could apply. Virtual and McKinley are so much smaller. It's to be able to open it up to any grade level.
Would you, I mean, on that point number five about sending it to the clerk, was there someone else that you would think would be better for them if, if they needed to resign?
School board clerk is a good position. Good position to receive the information.
Why do you think it's clerk, not president?
I don't know why that was.
Is that in alignment with all of us? So if I resign, am I sending you? I just wonder if we're all being treated as.
I just wish all that it didn't start with the board clerk. That's all I have. I have a case with my name. So pretty excited. Future Google.
I don't think we have anything on.
Do we have?
I don't know that we have anything on resignation in the coherent governance.
It's not.
Not specifically, like what's the process?
DC1?
Is it on DC1?
Yeah. Oh, it's the clerk. Lucky you.
There you are.
Yeah, look at that. Renovations will be made in writing and delivered to the board clerk. So I was wrong when I said it was me. It's you. So then that works. Life just got better. Please don't.
Yeah, shared, shared governance. Moving forward, if you do anything, don't have your peers vote you the clerk. So.
The thing about voting is you think, oh, like.
Yeah. So I don't do that. Of course.
All right. We're at 8:58 by my computer. I don't know if, Dr. Bika, you want to take a two minute swing at just bringing up that next little point, or we'll just move it to the next one? So I think basically all of these policy changes that were suggested, like went to consent, and we have, you know, some points to be working on for discussion. And Dr. Bika, you said you would maybe start a first draft of a rewrite of the 421.2 to suggest to the admin team. Thank you. All this is how I would, I'd hoped that we would go, have a good discussion, be able to try and move forward. You'll see all of those consent items on the seventh. I'd hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. We're adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.